For the meeting of the Waco City Council on August 16th, 2022 to order, please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We recognize an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than the public hearing, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the microphone due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone present that would like to speak on a work session item? And I do have one card from Anna Louise Devert. I don't know if she's here. All right, if not, then we will move to our first item of business. We will now recess the regular session and convene work session with a report from our city manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Counsel. Today, we have no changes to the agenda. But we do have three informal reports, and staff is available here if there are any questions regarding the informal reports.
Deputy City Manager Emerson, on all three of them, just quick comments. The first one being the CARES CDBG funding. On page 15, it kind of lays out where we are putting the funds. I thought it was very thoughtful. Staff did a great job of hitting small business, rental assistance, broadband infrastructure, and I think we're wisely spending the 1.7 million that we're getting in federal funding. So I appreciate the allocation and the management there. On 671, the airport, excited and enthusiastic about the progress we're making out there on terminal improvements. And I appreciate Hoel Martinez, who runs the airport out there, his communication and making sure everybody's up to speed on what's I see? Oh, well, I appreciate your efforts on communicating what's going on out there. It's a good way to market Waco. We have an opportunity to market Waco as people come on and off the airplane there. So first impressions are very important, and I think we're going to have a great terminal out there. And finally, good luck to staff. I know you have an October airline development conference where we'll maybe talk about getting some additional air carriers here, so good luck on that. And then the last one on scooters, the only comment I have is I agree that we take this to an RFP process, so I think it's a good idea. The pandemic has not been kind to e-scooter companies, so I think it's time to look what's out there. And I think it's proven that we want to keep the utility or the scooter availability, but putting it out there, I think, makes a lot of sense. So I appreciate the report. All three of them are great reports.
District 3, no comments on the first two informal reports. On the scooters, I will say that, not wanting to repeat the mistakes of 2019, I will not be participating in any scooter photo shoots like past councils have.
Mayor, I have something to say. I was at the airport this past week, and I got a private tour from Hoel Martinez, our director over there. So I got an update on the terminal building and the project that's going on. I'm really impressed, and I think it's really going to be an impressive airport when people get off and see, wow, this is Waco. And thank you, Hoel, for that. And I know you'll keep doing the good job that you're doing now, and I appreciate that informal tour that you gave me, I think it was Tuesday or Wednesday, one of those days anyway. But thank you, Hoel.
Alice?
Thank you. There are seven public hearings today, which includes public hearing 2022-684, which includes an ordinance adding the honorary street name of Lester Gibson Way to a portion of Washington Avenue from University Parks Drive to Sixth Street. Clint Peters will cover this item along with others later in the work session.
Deputy City Manager Emerson, I'm especially pleased to highlight this. It has been such a... Waco suffered a great loss in the legendary political giant of Lester Gibson, and acknowledging his life and legacy and the work that he has done for Waco and Wacoans in this way, I think, is incredibly appropriate because it is not just work that he did in a particular area, but, you know, as he is known as our man downtown, or as he was known. I thought this befitting to kind of document geographically his history from East Waco to the work that he did in renaming Martin Luther, Lake Razzas Drive to Martin Luther Kane, crossing the river, you know, transcending boundaries to City Hall, to the county courthouse. And so I just thought that this was an incredibly appropriate way to honor him.
Thank you. So with the recent adoption of the budget, we are still in the season of big agendas. So today, there are 51 resolutions on the agenda for your consideration, and I'll just highlight a few of those, beginning with Resolution 2022-689, which amends the American Rescue Plan Funding Plan in accordance with the adopted budget. This amendment reduces funding for utility generators and contingency, then reallocates those funds into other categories, resulting in a $1.76 million increase in funding for new affordable housing, which is a 41% increase, an additional $752,000 or 41% increase for down payment assistance, 1.6 million more, a 78% increase in funding for small business assistance, and finally, a new project added to art plan, the STEAM Center funded at 6.25 million. Okay. Resolutions 2022-696 through 699 are all contracts to support our We All Win or Small Business Development Program. If time allows this afternoon, I know we have some level of constraint, but we will hear from Galen Price on the communication plan that includes all of these entities.
And then Resolutions 2022...
Resolutions 2022-700 and 701 are associated with the Floyd Casey Project and respectively approve a development agreement with Floyd Casey One LLC to plan, design, develop, and construct a first-class, single-family, multifamily, and commercial development on 72.29 acres of land that was once the site of the old Floyd Casey Stadium. And then the provision of funding from TIF number four with public and open space improvements as well as interest costs.
City Manager, I'd like to thank staff and the council on these two resolutions. I'm real excited about what's going on in South Waco right now. Floyd Casey is a big part of what's going on. We also have a lot going on at Cotton Palace Park, Bells Hill Park. There's so much going on in South Waco. And I know there's a lot of constructions and a lot of, you can't go this way, you've got to go the other way. But I think our folks are going to be real excited and proud when all this development comes to bear, and folks are going to be real, especially myself, because I've been waiting years to have new housing in South Waco, and there has never been any places for us to put any new housing because South Waco doesn't have those, that kind of lots open. And when this came forward and the council went in and did what they did and the staff brought this project forward, I thank y'all. I thank y'all, District 2 and South Waco thinks you as well. And I'm sure the city of Waco will as well when they see what all is going to be done over there. So again, thank you.
Holmes here. Alice, I want to make sure, I appreciate your leadership in this project, because I know this has been close to your heart, and it's a transformative project that we have going on at Floyd Casey, and I appreciate what you've done to make this happen. And I appreciate staff on this, too, fully supportive of this process and meets a lot of needs in that neighborhood. That area is going to be transformed. I mean, it's 240 new single-family homes, 60 multifamily units, and a commercial development on South Ollie Mills Drive there. Great partner in the development here with Sarah Robertson, the Turner Group. Excited to work with them and take this to next steps. Just running down, I know they sound like big numbers, but these are all public, very public improvements that we're talking about here, a hiking bike trail, a new all-inclusive park that we've been talking about for, since I've gotten on council.
Five years.
Finally coming to fruition, yeah, coming to fruition here. And the, and the payback here comes through TIF, Tax Increment Fund. In other words, as this thing works, it creates a bigger tax base, which generates funds to help pay the project back. So I like the construct and the return on investment, and overall, I think it's going to be a great project. And as we, as we look at it and support it over these next few years, I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Want to add one quick thing. I'm thrilled about this project. I think we're all really invested in seeing the old Floyd Casey give back to the neighborhood and strengthen South Waco and the core of the city. Because there are so many public dollars going into this, I want to be sure that we're also being really protective and that the folks that we're intending to land in these homes are indeed able to access these in terms of cost. So ways that we can be creative and continuing to keep STRs out of this property in the future and have some lots that are available for our folks within our area median income. It would, it would be such a disappointment to add a ton of houses but not have some of our hard-working families be able to access these lots. So excited to see this pushed forward, but the language and the realm of affordable housing is so abstract, and affordability means different things to every person, and so I want to make sure that we have affordable units for our hard-working class families.
I think that was the intent, and I hope it still is the intent, to provide affordable housing to everyone. Affordable housing, big end housing, and middle housing. So I think it's going to be a little bit of the best of everything, but I appreciate, I appreciate your remarks and gems as well. But it's, I'm looking forward to seeing what's going to happen there and real excited about it.
I agree with what's been said. I think that this is a really generational opportunity and a transformational opportunity for our community to have a really pristine, beautiful, mixed-income development. And I, you know, in terms of ensuring, I believe that, again, as has been the intention and has been the design, that this is going to be a neighborhood that is going to have a place for everybody. And I think that there's a lot of tools in our toolkit that we can deploy for that, but think that this is going to just really have an opportunity to really bolster an already strong neighborhood and excited to see it come through. Thanks to our city staff and the development team for getting it to this point, and excited to continue to move forward with this. And what I'm excited about from a city perspective is we've really entered in the deep waters of housing and, to Councilmember Palmer's point, the definition of affordability and how that can be applied is obviously very broad in scope. And I think there's a lot of different tools in the toolkit and a lot of different strategies and approaches that I think this council and our staff is ready to deploy. And we're going to be learning as we go in some ways, and I think that we're really committed to continuing to improve in those strategies and deploy diverse skill, set of goals and objectives to different parts of the community. And sometimes we're going to, you know, maybe affordable multifamily makes sense in one area, maybe high-density single-family makes sense in another. And how we approach that is critical, but I think there's a real commitment from this council to really continue to sharpen our skill sets around having great quality developments and ensuring that everyone in Waco has opportunity to good housing stock. So excited to see us move forward.
Thank you, Mayor, for those. I also want to say I'm also excited about the park area that's going to come up, not just inclusive park, but the part of park where the lake is going to be, where folks from all over Waco, South Waco as well, to come and enjoy a good afternoon or a good weekend and enjoy themselves in the heart of South Waco and in the heart of Waco. So I'm excited about every part of this, and it just needs to be said that, that it's a good, good improvement for us. Floyd Casey has been there since all I can remember. It's always been there, but I'm glad the city stepped forward and got that plot of land, so now we're going to move forward with it, and I'm excited about it. So thank you all, all the council and staff.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-736 is also on your agenda, and this item follows the city council's August 22nd, August 202022 approval of the purchase of five diesel generators by contracting with McCrery and Associates Incorporated for the design and electrical engineering plans for the installation of these generators. The need for these generators was made apparent during Winter Storm Yuri in 2020 and was included in the after-action plan prepared by staff following that storm. This design work is another step towards power redundancy and compliance with Texas legislature's post-storm Yuri preparedness requirements for all utilities. And there are six ordinances on the agenda today. It is, one is a first reading and the remaining five are second readings. Ordinance 2022-739 is the first reading of the appointment of Robert R. Garcia as municipal court judge. I admit it is my understanding that Mr. Garcia will be with us at the 6:00 PM session. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
I just had, I'm sorry, Mayor, just one quick comment on a couple of resolutions. Back in the 712 to 717 range, we're approving a lot of, I know, as Deputy City Manager Emerson said, in, I guess, August, September, September, October time period, we were approving a lot of resolutions because they are relative to the budget and putting money out the door to buy some of this stuff or to get it into the program. But these are, 712 to 717 are police department elements of equipment, and I see Chief Victorian back there. We have a great police department, a well-staffed police department, and I'm so happy for Chief Victorian and what we've accomplished here under her leadership. And these are equipment to have, it's good to have a well-staffed group, but we need to make sure they have the resources, too. So if you look through here, we're getting a bunch of new tasers, new operational software, dash cameras, body worn cameras, uniforms, and I'm just very supportive of what we're doing in the current police department. The, and a quick, if I have one more comment, Deputy City Manager. 718, 719, 720, also related to the policing and how that intersects with behavioral health and how we are very intentional about how we build partnerships in the behavioral health, with behavioral health experts and how we actually make our police force more efficient, more productive as we, and serve the Waco citizens better as well, as we have these kind of relationships. That kind of transition, I'm always excited to see us do, the police department and behavioral health specialists working together. So I'm glad to see all these on the, in the resolutions today. That's all I had.
Mayor, I have something. I know usually during our resolutions, we'd put them all together and vote on them, but there is one resolution that I'm not comfortable with, and that is Resolution 708. I'd like to pull that and vote on that separately because I'm not going to vote affirmative on that. It's not the organization that I have a problem with, it's the location. So if we could pull 708 and vote on that separately.
Absolutely. The remainder of the consent agenda is 266 through 738, and we're now pulling 708. Are there any other agenda items council would like to pull? If not, then the consent agenda will be 266 through 738 with the exception of 708?
Mayor, if I may, we have 700, 701, and 728 pulled as well.
Please, sorry.
700, 701, and 728.
Thank you. All right. So the consent agenda will include Resolution 2022-688 through 738 with the exception of 700, 701, 708, and 728. The next item on the agenda is work session 2022-673 through 675. Deidre, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This afternoon, we will have Amy Brolarly Highland, Director of Public Works, and the team from Walker Partners talk to us about the discussion of the Washington Avenue Reconstruction Improvement Project located along Washington Avenue between North 18th and North 26th Streets.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to be doing this presentation for you this evening on the Washington Avenue project and update of where we're at. With me today, I have Jacob Bell from Walker Partners and Jonathan Cannon from Walker Partners, who will be doing the majority of the presentation, along with city staff, Angela Julian, and Tanner Sparks. Angie is our project manager in the City of Waco Public Works Department Engineering, and Tanner is one of our EITs, engineers in training, who joined us, what, last year? Or it's time, a little over a year ago, time flies. So I just wanted you to see the faces of the people in the city who are helping us get these projects out the door. So without further ado, I will turn the mic over to Jacob.
Thank you, Amy. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us here today. Before we dive into the presentation, I would like to cover a few semantics. The word schematic design, I want to explain that. We are in the design phase of the project, and for this project on Washington Avenue, it's going to basically have three steps: schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. So we're just at the completion of the first step, which means really we're only about 20 to 30% into the design. We've done a lot of good research, but there's a lot of work to go. With that, I want to dive in, like to give you an overview of what we're going to talk about. We'll give you an overview of the project in general. We'll talk through the utilities, the city water and sewer, franchise utilities, storm water. We'll talk about traffic signals, the proposed concepts for the street and sidewalk, and then we'll wrap it up with cost estimate and schedule. Okay, as to an overview of the project. So this project is on Washington Avenue, and it runs from North 18th Street to North 26th Street. This is on the tail end of the project that we just completed for y'all on Washington Avenue from U-Parks or University Parks Drive to 18th. That project was a mill and overlay, the two-way conversion, signal work, and some corner ramps. This project has quite a bit of differences than the previous project, and we'll talk about those here in the next few slides. For starters, the existing pavement on this stretch is in worse shape than the previous stretch. When our services were authorized late last year, the council agenda item mentioned that there had been 46 work orders on the pavement between September of 2016 and September of 2021. So there's quite a bit of work happening. These are some sample slides showing the conditions. Also, the curb and gutter is in much worse shape on this stretch than the previous stretch. You have different types of materials, you have broken curb, places that pond water don't drain. And then the sidewalk is, in some places, in really bad shape, and in some places, just absent. What's interesting about the sidewalk is, back in the day, contractors used to stamp their concrete work with the dates of their work and the company name. Several of the stamps I saw were in the 1950s, and I saw one that was even 1927. So nearly 100 years old infrastructure that we're dealing with here. I know that this slide has a lot going on, but this is a snipping from the city's GIS site on the zoning layer, and shows the different zoning classifications. One way that this project is different, which the black box on Washington Avenue is the project limits. One way it's different from the previous project is this is not as urban or downtown of a feel as a previous project. You see the brown shades near the top of the map, that's the central commercial district where parking requirements are much different, buildings are much closer, there, it has a much more commercial and office feel. Our stretch that we're dealing with has much more of a neighborhood feel. There's quite a few homes, there's old homes that have been converted to offices or businesses. In fact, this stretch of the road is in a district called the West End District, which is a zoning overlay that was set up some years ago as a transition zone between downtown and the single-family residential up on Sanger or down on Austin Avenue. So we need to be aware of our surroundings, and we don't need to design the wrong solution for the wrong place. So as we come into this, we're keeping that in mind. As everybody knows also, the traffic is different on this stretch of Washington. Quite a bit of traffic from the previous project turns off onto 18th Street, so there's less traffic and hopefully slower traffic through this stretch. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Jonathan, who will give us an overview of the utilities.
All right, thanks, Jacob. So let's dive into some of the existing utilities that are present in the project. First of all, I do want to point out, for the sake of time, we're not going to look at the entire project, we're going to zone in on one section here that's a pretty good representation of what's in place throughout the project. So what you're seeing here is water and wastewater. The blue represents water line on the project, and the green represents wastewater. There's about 3,500 linear feet of water from the beginning to the end of the project, and that was installed about the mid-1940s. It's a ductile iron pipe, and so we've gotten a good lifespan out of that, and we'll be replacing it for the full length of the project. There's around 2,800 linear feet of wastewater on the project, and some good news there is that about 1,200 of those feet were replaced in 2009. And so we'll be able to keep a good amount of that infrastructure and utilize that, will not have to replace that portion. The remainder is clay pipe, and so we will be replacing that. It was installed in the mid-1960s. And as you can see on this screen, there is a lot going on with wastewater in this area. And one of our big goals, and the utilities department's big goal, is to clean up the wastewater here. You can see that we've got active lines in the street, we have abandoned lines, we have lines behind buildings, underneath buildings, pretty much everywhere you can imagine. And so we're going to be working really close with them to get this area cleaned up and looking better. Another noteworthy item is that this location is part of the city's long-term wastewater master plan, this route, and so we're working with them to make sure we have those lines sized appropriately and in the correct location so they'll work for those longer-goal projects. Okay? The second piece of the utility puzzle is storm drain. There are three large storm drain crossings of Washington Avenue. One of those you can see on your screen is where Tributary of Waco Creek crosses in a 15-foot-wide archtop box culvert. There's another large box culvert that runs down 23rd Street, and then there's a 60-inch diameter pipe that runs in 18th Street. Now, the plan for this project is for those to remain, those will stay in place in their existing condition, but we will be replacing the storm drain along Washington Avenue. And really, there's not a whole lot of storm drain other than the crossings themselves. And so that's led to some drainage and maintenance problems on Washington Avenue. So we've met with city staff, we've walked the street with them, as well as the maintenance department, we've identified those locations, and we'll be fully replacing lines along the street to alleviate those and help with that maintenance long term. And then the third piece of the utility puzzle is the franchise utilities. And so what you're seeing here, the yellow on the top of the screen is a gas line that runs the full extent of the project, and then the red is overhead electric and telecom. And most of the project, that is running along Washington itself on the bottom side of your screen or handout. There is a short portion that we wanted to show on here where that switches to behind buildings, but for the most part, it is along Washington. We've reached out to the franchise utility company, so they are aware that the project is going on, and we'll continue coordination with them throughout design and construction. All right, so now let's pull it all together. When you combine those three slides, you can see what's on your screen or handout here. There is a lot going on utility-wise in Washington. This is a really complicated area, there's a lot of utilities that need to find a home, and so we're going to be actively working with the streets department, with the utilities department, and with the franchise utilities to get those all in a good location that's easier on maintenance and help those to remain active throughout construction. So let's take a quick look at traffic signals as well. There are three locations on Washington Avenue that have traffic signals. Those are 18th Street, 25th Street, and 26th Street. After coordination with the city traffic department, it's been determined that 18th Street, those signals are going to remain, the existing signal, but due to age and condition, the signals at 25th Street and 26th Street will be scheduled to be replaced. And I'm going to hand it back over to Jacob again.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. So we've covered much of the existing conditions, so let's talk about some of the proposed concepts that we have worked through with city staff. So on the next two slides, you're going to see the whole length of the project, not just an excerpt. So top left starts at 26th, bottom right on the next slide will get you all the way down to 18th Street. And what you're basically going to see on these two slides is that we're proposing two lanes of traffic, one in each direction, and then parallel parking on the outside. This is a zoomed-in slide, looking at a sample, and some of the hatching is washing out on this, I apologize for that, but bottom line, what I'll try to explain with this is the road we're proposing is 45 feet wide, back of curb to back of curb. That gives two 12-foot vehicular lanes and two 10 and 1/2-foot. That gives two 12-foot vehicular lanes and two 10-and-a-half-foot parallel parking lanes. This is a cross-section view or a typical section cut through the road that shows the same information, just a little bit differently. A few things I'll point out. Sidewalks, most of the existing sidewalks throughout the corridor where they are present are four feet wide. So six-foot-wide sidewalks would be a little wider, more comfortable, gives passing room. The two 12-foot drive lanes, many of your traffic lanes through the city vary anywhere from 10 to 12 feet, so this is a little bit on the wider end, but comfortable. The 10-and-a-half-foot wide parallel parking, most parallel parking spaces are eight to nine feet. So this gives us a little bit of buffer, so if people are parked on the side of the road, which many people do today, there's room to open and close doors.
Jacob, how does that compare to what the street is currently?
Great question. So about half of the project is 55 feet wide, and half is 45 feet wide. So in looking at the amount of traffic and the need for left turn lanes, there isn't really a need for left turn lanes through the heart of the project. We just came to the conclusion, hey, a 45-foot section really makes sense for the entire length of the project, keep it consistent. So for that stretch where it's 55, we're going to be reducing it to 45. And that does a few things. One, it reduces the upfront construction cost. Two, it reduces your long-term maintenance costs because you have less footprint of pavement to maintain. Three, just bringing that in on the wider stretch, anytime you're wide open, traffic is encouraged to go faster. Anytime you confine it, again, not uncomfortable, but confine it a little bit, it'll moderate that traffic. And then the fourth thing it does on, in particular, on the north side of the road or northwest side of the road, depending on what directions you're using, there are some trees that we could possibly save, and that would move the sidewalk onto the other side of the trees, get the curb and the pavement away from those trees. So that is the game plan at this point, is to narrow it down to 45 foot consistently.
Follow-up on that, the city, a year ago, striped Austin Avenue. Is this going to look like that essentially?
Yes, sir. That's the kind of inspiration for how the parallel parking is being handled. And you may have saw in the layout that on the barbell end of the project, where it's a little more commercialized, that there's striped parallel parking, but throughout the heart of it, the city staff and we agreed that Austin Avenue, look, it's kind of, it matches the feel of the heart of this project.
I think that makes a lot of sense, and I think a recent traffic study that Amy presented at Austin Avenue Urban Association a few months ago, you know, showed that reduced speeds by about three mile an hour on Austin. And I think the feedback from the community has been generally pretty positive. I think it gives pedestrians in areas that don't have sidewalks a sense of where they can be on the road or where bicyclists can possibly be if there's no cars there, dog walkers and others. So I think that this is going to be a nice quality of life feature for this neighborhood.
Right, and again, going back to one of the earlier slides, it seems like the right fit for this project and as far as the neighborhood as it exists today.
Jacob, can you go back to a couple more slides? Back, back there, no, one more maybe. Yep, this one. So it looks like they're, right now, if you go to the 25th and Washington intersection where you have the bulb-dot parking, or the striped parking, rather, two questions. One is, even where there's not designated parking, but there's a white, long white stripe, could, is there going to be enough room for vehicles to safely parallel park?
Yes, sir.
And then the other question I have is, right now, that parking, those white, that, right now, I think is off-street parking, like it kind of bulbs in? Does that make sense?
Parking?
Yeah, exactly. And that is going away, correct?
As of this point in the design, we are considering parallel parking throughout the entire corridor to be consistent with other projects that the city has proceeded with.
You said the raw number, I missed it, but what is the delta gain versus loss at this intersection? Do you know off the top of your head?
No, sir, we have not analyzed that at this intersection yet.
That's fine. That'd just be, I know that there's a lot of, that's a heavy parking area, and so if there's going to be, I would just be curious what the delta, I would guess, loss is for the parallel parking. And, you know, there's a couple of popular retail spaces along there, and I would just, if y'all are doing your research, go look and see. It varies because there's an event center on the corner, as you know, that hosts a lot of events late into the evening and that kind of, and then there's a kind of a breakfast and cocktail bar space nearby there too. And I think that there's, they kind of share different hours, but they share parking because they have different hot zone times, hot zone times, busy times?
Ooh, hot zone, yes.
So I just, I do want to be careful about, I mean, again, I think, you know, as I see this, there's a lot of parallel parking that previously would not have been available in this map that will be available now, but just kind of want to have a good, clear understanding of that. And there's probably good worthwhile engagement with the, some of the retail owners along there to just inform them and get some of their feedback in this process, because again, it's, it gets busy over there.
We'll be glad to look at that through the next design phases and work with city staff. And throughout design, that's some of the next steps that will be happening is correspondence and communication with the property owners.
We're also planning a public meeting, so we will be reaching out to the residents and the businesses and have a public meeting on the project.
I know, I think with Mayor Dylan being both mayor and the former D4 council member, he and I have just been on so many email chains over the last two years about parking at that particular intersection. So really hearing from the event center, from Class A, from Harvest, from Sloane's, from the B&amp;B, to make sure that everyone's needs are met. Sometimes, when it is a hot zone, it's really hard to park there, and you have to go a couple of blocks away. And so I think the added street parking will help.
Yeah, I agree.
But thinking like, you know, after dinner drinks or Saturday brunch, especially because so many tourists go there, and they don't have the insider knowledge to go, you know, a couple of blocks here or there, just being very clear on how they can direct their patrons to park.
Along those lines too, as, I guess, a resident in and nearby of this neighborhood, but will 25th, 26th be striped or changed? Like, would those park-in spots near Harvest and Sloane's and, that aren't on Washington, but are on like 25th or 26th, will those be changed at all?
Plans to change those, but as we proceed in design, if we, sometimes when you start tipping a domino, it tips other dominoes. So if we have to chase a storm drain line or sewer line, and we need to reconstruct the street, we may be touching that area. But as of now, we don't intend to perform any work in those areas.
Okay, the off-street kind of, okay, thanks.
Holmes here, just a follow-up on Councilmember Palmer's question. And, because I always get, I always feel claustrophobic when you're taking road space away. I always start, wow, man, they got all those cars there, and I feel like that in Austin already, but. So we're, right now, we've got, and this goes to her question about what do we have now? Where are we going? Because where we're going is basically one lane either way with parallel parking on the side, slightly narrower, all-in footprint. And how is it, there's parts of this that are, that do have a turning lane in there.
Really, the only turn lanes are at the barbell ends at each 18th and 26th.
Those are the only ones.
And so much of the project right now functions at the same width we're proposing. Much of it is 45 feet wide, and while it's not striped, people do parallel park in front of the curb, which essentially leaves room for one lane in each direction. And so we're, for the most part, going back with the same exact function, just delineating it a little better.
Thanks, Jacob.
Yes, sir. This shows an example of the area where we are going from 55 to 45. What could happen is, right now, the trees, many of them are between the curb and the sidewalk, and if we narrow that down to 45, essentially, the sidewalk would move to the other side of the tree and get the curb and pavement away from the trees. And anytime we work around trees, there's no guarantee that they will survive. We will be working with an arborist. We will be assessing the trees and giving good notes to the contractor to hopefully increase or maximize the likelihood that they do survive. Okay, Mr. Holmes, I do not have a Gantt chart for you.
Fred, we have to vote no on this one, Jacob.
As far as the cost estimate and schedule, the, under the cost segment, the $552,000, that's what we are already under contract for, for the engineering and surveying portion of the project. Our current construction estimate is $7.7 million. That is up from our previous estimate, and I will talk about that here in the next slide. And then right now, we're projecting about $500,000 in construction management inspection and testing costs. And it is to be determined whether that third line there of the construction management, will that be handled in-house by city staff, third party, or some hybrid approach. So total project cost, essentially, $8.8 million. As far as schedule, design is ongoing, and as we go through design development and construction documents, that will take us into next spring. Then any franchise utility relocations can begin, giving them six to nine months, which is pretty typical these days. That would allow us to bid it out late 2023, and we're estimating about 18 months of construction. So that takes you into summer of '25. As far as the breakdown of the costs, this is categorized by the major components of infrastructure: pavement, sidewalk, drainage, water, wastewater, and the traffic signals. So our estimate about nine months ago was $5.7 million, and you can see the total is 7.7. So why the increase? There's really two reasons. One, the sidewalk and wastewater scope of work grew, because when we looked at it in November, December, it was very high level. We hadn't performed our survey yet. As Jonathan explained, we started to uncover all of the wastewater concerns and work with wastewater utilities. So those items grew as we started to understand more about them. And then the second reason for the cost increase is just the cost escalation we have seen on construction projects. Over the past six to 12 months, we've seen increases anywhere from 15 to 25%. I know that y'all, as a council, I think a meeting or two ago rejected all bids on a project because they came in higher than expected. I had two projects last week that the developer decided not to proceed right now because of construction costs. So it is a real thing. Construction costs are going up. I did some research in the past couple of days of Engineering News Record, who does research across the nation, and they're saying that August was the peak, and we saw a slight decline or dip in construction costs in September, but that remains to be seen. So based on the best available data at the time, this is the construction cost we are sitting at. And the next slide brings in the funding sources, which the city staff can elaborate on if there are any questions. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Great. Thanks, Jacob. Any other questions? Yeah, sorry.
When we, when these community meetings happen, because there are such an interesting mix of folks who own property here, there are short-term rental property owners, there are long-term renters that live there, there are business owners, can we be sure to make sure that the rent, the long-term renters are also looped into this process, as well as the folks that own the property and live elsewhere?
Yes, and the public meeting, there's one scheduled for the library in mid-October. We're trying to finalize the date and get notices out, and the city staff does a great job of doing that, notifying both property owners and the occupants.
Excellent.
And then there will be one-on-one conversations as, in particular, issues come up in front of people's properties.
Okay, awesome. This is such a huge win. At one point, I was living, working, and teaching on Washington between 8th and 30th. So I have walked, I have biked, I have rollerbladed this stretch of Washington for years, and it needs some serious TLC and love. And seeing that screen with all of the different overlays of the utilities is wild, so really grateful for the way y'all are collaborating with city staff to do this really thoughtfully, so that way in 2070, when someone's looking at this, they're seeing a much cleaner document to rebuild our infrastructure from.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Councilmember Palmer just said about communication with those, because it is a little slightly different mix of, I think everybody was apprehensive on Washington from U Parks to 18th, and I think it's, it's turned out to be a beautiful project. I think, at least I thought it would slow things down, and you drive it now, and it's a great-looking road. So this, the logical extension to go from 18th on out to 26th, which really does need, is in need of repair. And as Kelly said, there's, and you mentioned, there's a different mix there. I didn't know it was called the West End District, first of all. But the mix of residential and commercial versus the, basically, the office that we had on the other, so communication is key. And I'm confident that this will be a very beautiful project to make Washington a great street from U Parks to 26th.
I agree. I think this is a really exciting project. It's even highlighted the need for infrastructure repairs along here after Washington, the project from University Parks to 18th. And then when you kind of get to where that drops off, you're like, whoa, that really needs some work. You can see it. And so I'm excited for the investment that we're making in infrastructure here and throughout the city. Really exciting. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, next we'll have Galen Price will come and speak to us on the We All Win Communications Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we will provide you with an update on the communication strategies around the We All Win Business, Small Business Support Program. We'll cover the background, collaborations, communication plan, and answer any questions that you may have. The We All Win Program was created to continue the small business investment in the Waco community with a focus on businesses in the historically blighted corridors. This unprecedented investment was created with the use of sources that include the American Rescue Plan Act funds, as well as excess sales tax revenue. With such a large program that has been developed, the city has reached out to community partners to collaborate with getting these programs accomplished. We are proposing contracts totaling $210,000 for assistance with administration and marketing. As Deputy City Manager Emerson mentioned earlier, these agreements are on tonight's agenda for your consideration. Each agency will focus on certain areas and corridors to maximize the outreach efforts with the goal of reaching as many businesses as possible. In getting the word out on availability, we have developed a plan to maximize interest in the program. This includes information on social media, radio station interviews, flyers, postcards, and speaking at neighborhood association meetings. These are examples of what we have done to date to get the word out about the program. For the future, there are events that are centered around and focused on this business support program. For example, the BOSS Conference being held by the Syntex African-American Chamber of Commerce will center around assistance and information for the program, including the ability to receive hands-on technical assistance with the funding application, and also hearing from recipients of previous small business grant programs that have been provided. Future technical assistance workshops for prospective applicants will be held in collaboration with various groups assisting with the program. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Holmes here. Thanks, Galen, for the presentation. Anytime we can help small businesses, I am in total support of it, and I think this is great, particularly as we see post-pandemic, good recovery in the city of Waco, with still some small businesses struggling. We want everybody to succeed in this environment. I think, I've always said that we need to create, it's part of my job as a councilman to help create an economic environment where businesses can succeed. I think this is a cool part of what we're doing to make sure that small businesses have the resources they need. So I'm very supportive. Thanks for the presentation, and best of luck in administering. I know you've got a great track record of administering small business programs during the pandemic, and best of luck to you to get these things launched. Appreciate it, Galen.
Thank you.
Galen, this is a huge win. I have the pleasure of serving on the African-American Chamber Board, and we were talking about this a couple of weeks ago, and there was just such a level of excitement from community members that this was the first that they were hearing about this and the implication this will have, not only for black business owners, but small business owners across the community that have been significantly impacted by COVID-19. We've seen a number of businesses shut their doors or be on the edge of having to shut their doors. So for us to be able to really creatively partner with organizations that have a wide range of relational trust built up, from startup to the Hispanic Chamber, to the Black Chamber, to grassroots, just feels like such a win of us leveraging the best of who we are as a community in order to protect the heartbeat of our community, who are our small business owners that, you know, pay for Little League teams to have their uniforms and support neighbors when they're sick and create spaces where we can hold neighborhood meetings. So I am just really grateful to be a part of a council that is investing unprecedented resources into our small business ecosystem. So thanks for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Galen, thank you for the presentation. I'm curious, is there a space, either on the website or, because I know there's, you know, programs being designed and opportunities for people to walk through the project with technical support, but is there an FAQ somewhere? So if I'm, you know, hearing about the program through the various collaborative resources that we have, just, you know, on the street, whatever, is there a space somewhere I can go and look up what's go and look up what this means?
Yes, ma'am. We have created a website, weallwinwaco.com, and on their website, it has the actual guidelines, FAQ, a link to the application, and additional information provided regarding the program, so.
And that link is directly on the QR codes for the pamphlets and handouts that we've been distributing through the community, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm so excited about this. Thank you to all of our staff's hard work. I think that this, what I've, this is a long time coming, and I think that this is the product of our city staff and council's commitment to build out a diversified economy. And as we celebrate and are excited about large industry, significant capital investment, and a large number of jobs coming to Waco, we're also really want to be thoughtful about how we support entrepreneurs and small businesses, how we attract executive jobs into downtown Waco, and really just kind of build out this holistic, diversified economy. And this is, I think, a really critical step towards that goal. A couple of questions I had is, or one note to have, I guess, is when it says on the grants, "will help businesses supported by construction," is that referring to, like, street construction, road construction, as we've kind of seen?
Yes, sir.
And I'm really so thankful for this element being included. When you have a historic city with old infrastructure, we have to repair our streets, and our water infrastructure, and our sewer infrastructure, and our sidewalks. But that's miserable if you're a business and are being impacted by that. And so it's something that we've got to do. We don't want to maintain the status quo of having outdated, you know, deferred maintenance with our infrastructure. But if we can support those businesses as we get through this, I think it's a really creative mechanism to ensure that businesses can survive these, what would be a challenging time as we repair infrastructure. So thankful for that. For the long-term blight element, is that a facade improvement grant is kind of what you're foreseeing for that? Or how do you picture the deployment of funds to address that specific concern?
Yes, we are looking at a facade improvement. We actually will be speaking with TIF boards, one and four, in the near future to discuss potentially investment from the TIF, TIF funding to help support the facade program in addition to funds under the ARPA grant as well, so.
And so with the ARPA grants, when we're using ARPA grants to address long-term blight, what are, is that kind of, you're thinking capital investment in the structures, or?
Yes, capital investments in the structures. Based on areas, there's the qualified census tracts, which allow us to use ARPA funds in support of facade improvement programs as well, so.
I really love that, because I think that one of the things that I've heard for years through so many of our commercial corridors is a desire to see public infrastructure and, you know, the opportunity for public infrastructure to be upgraded and improved upon, and facade grants to be issued, because I think that really can help expedite business districts become formed and as small businesses thrive. But we get such a tangible direct return to that by securing the, these commercial buildings in our city core. Not only does that secure our tax base, but it also ensures that structures are not further dilapidating, that at some point, the city's going to have to address through code or some other means. So I think it's, I'm really in favor of that as a vehicle to support small businesses by seeing some of these businesses who are amazing, strong, healthy businesses, but really need some help with the public infrastructure outside of their space, or could get a little facade grant that's going to really improve the, how inviting their businesses and the customer experience. So really exciting to see that be deployed as well. I think as the program gets built out, I'd be curious to see kind of what are the metrics for, and I, you know, I think there's this dance, right, that we don't want to make it too challenging for small businesses to apply for this. In fact, we want to make it easy for businesses to apply for this, I would say. But on the flip side of that, we want to make sure that we're stewarding these dollars well and deploying them to businesses who are going to have meaningful investment or meaningful utilization of these grant dollars. So as the, I guess, the rubric gets set, or the tracking of, you know, what is the ROI to the community for these grant dollars, I'll be curious to see what that looks like as this gets formed and gelled, because I think that it is important that, there's so many small businesses in our community that have need, I want to make sure that we're stewarding it well, but again, not overly restrictive, which is a hard balance to hit, but I think we can do that.
Right now, we're in our pilot program. So right now, the rubric is, we'll be measuring job creation and job retention over a period of time after assistance has been provided. But once we evaluate the pilot program, there is room for us to potentially enhance, depending on the assistance that's provided, additional rubrics to help determine based on assistance provided as well, so.
Mayor, a future meeting, we'll be bringing that amendment to the 380 policy, and when we do that, we'll have those other, that rubric attached to that.
Good deal. Thanks, Galen. Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Really exciting. Thank you, Galen.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. We do have seven public hearings tonight. The first one is dealing with our subdivision plats. We have four subdivision plats, the first one being preliminary plat of the M&M Industrial Edition. This is a new 200-acre-plus industrial development out in our Texas Central Industrial Park. It will be extending Gateway Boulevard from Bagby over to I-35 and have seven lots that will include industrial and multifamily sites. You can see the plat here with the extension of Gateway will be built to the same industrial standard that the existing portion of Gateway is built to. There'll also be some water and sewer improvements involved with this. The next plat is the final plat and construction plans of the Church Road Estates Edition Phase One. This is a single-family subdivision out in the Highway 84 corridor. These are R1A lots, which are larger, single-family lots, half-acre plus in size, 43 lots. This was recently annexed, and so you see the Phase One there where it connected into our city limits. And so this will be a city of Waco development on city utilities. You can see the first phase there. The next plat is the final plat and construction plans of the Keys on the Brazos Edition. This is another residential development adjacent to Keys Creek, which is a single-family subdivision of Steinbeck Bend inside the city limits, but in the Bosqueville area. This is just planned for seven large lots ranging in size from about 23 acres up to 35 acres. They all have frontage on the Brazos River, so large estate-type lots. And they'll connect to cul-de-sacs that are at the end of streets within Keys Creek. And they will be constructing those cul-de-sacs and extending the water and sewer to serve those seven lots. And then our final plat is construction plans and final plat of Copper Springs Edition Phase Three. This is a phase of the Copper Springs Edition that's been developing out in China Spring area along Tree Lake. It includes 78 single-family lots. The typical lot size on these is 70 feet by 120 feet. Does have a large lot for some drainage area through the property, and will include the relocation and upsizing of a 24-inch sewer line that's needed for not only this development, but for other developing areas in that area. So we'll be bringing you an upsizing agreement, future meeting, for that line. And all these plats are recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. Our next public hearing is a public hearing for a renewal of a special permit for a transitional shelter two in O3 Zoning District at 1618 and 1628 Lyle Avenue. This is for a recovery home operated by the Central Alcoholic Foundation Incorporated. They've been operating at this property since 1985. It is a treatment house for up to 14 adults with two onsite operators, one that lives there full-time and then one that's there during the day. This is along Lyle and 17th. It is O3. It's a mixed area with more commercial zoning along 18th Street and Herring, and then you get back to more of a residential area to the north. This is the property on the corner, looking down Lyle, and then back towards 18th and Lyle, we have the Dollar General. We did mail 34 notices on this and had zero return and Plan Commission recommended approval of the renewal for another five years by a vote of nine to zero. Then moving up Lyle, a couple of blocks to 2505 Lyle, this is a special permit request to operate a food truck late hours in O3 Zoning District. The O3 zoning does limit retail sales between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and they are requesting to extend those hours from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. This is at the corner of 25th and Lyle. It's predominantly a single-family area. You do have some commercial development down 25th as you get closer to Riker School and Church there, but the area around it is mainly residential. There is a beauty salon operating on the site, and they're proposing to put a food truck on the parking lot there.
Clint, on this one, real quick, is this on the hours of operation?
Yes.
It looks like, okay, staff recommendation was to extend the hours until nine, Sunday through Thursday, until 10:00 on Friday and Saturday.
That's correct.
And then Plan Commission agreed and approved on the Sunday through Thursday hours. Is that right?
Correct.
So till nine, but then they voted to bump it to 11:00 on Friday, Saturday. Is that correct?
They, yes, their recommendation was for an hour longer than what staff recommended on, just on the weekends.
On the two Friday and Saturday nights?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's the variance between the original staff recommendation and then Plan Commission recommendation was that hour, whether it's 10:00 or 11:00 Friday and Saturday night?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
With this building, so there's the salon there in the left-hand corner, is the food truck just beside it? It's not replacing that inside the building, correct?
Correct, yeah. It would actually be on this corner right here. And then they'll, from my understanding, the salon will still be in operation.
Okay.
They close, I believe, at 8:00 p.m., and then the food truck is just at night.
Okay. I mean, I think this is a huge, there is so little food in Dean Highland and so many families that I think this is a huge win.
Yeah, I agree. Councilmember, do you mind, what are your thoughts on adding a provision or condition that says they won't, there's a food truck, there's a food truck near my old, one of my houses I lived in one time that was really loud. They had, like, live music and played, like, drums at night. And given that this is so close to residential neighborhoods, is there a reasonable condition that we could place on this that would say that they won't have excessive noise that would be a nuisance to the neighbors or something like that as a condition to the short, to a special permit? Or is that something that you'd have interested? I mean, I definitely agree, and this location makes sense for a commercial, it's obviously functioning as a commercial purpose. I agree to have the food there, and obviously, there'll be people gathering and cars coming and going, but beyond that, is there a way to add that as a condition?
That's a good idea.
Like a no-music after 7:00?
No, I don't, I think that there can be, I just don't want it to be disruptive to neighbors because of its proximity to residential and its current zoning. And so I think that if there's a way to just say, I think having music on site that isn't a nuisance to the neighborhood is fine. I would just say something that, it gives us a lever. Obviously, we have noise ordinances in place already, but we can't, like, pull a permit if they're violating that. So that's just an idea to protect some of the neighbor's concerns. If, you know, again, I've seen that from personal experience, and I think that this could be, will be very successful regardless of that.
Sure. Yeah, and my understanding from talking with the applicant is that it's more of a to-go food truck. They're not going to put any tables out?
Oh, is that right?
They actually have a condition in there that they're not going to put any tables out, so they're, you know, I think, you know, a lot of the food trucks that have had the tables and have the music are more geared towards people eating there, that's not their business model. They want to get the people, get their food, and, you know, have them move on, so. We did put that as a condition in there that no outdoor seating shall be allowed for the food truck establishment, the hours of operation. This permit is for one year, so we will be able to review it in a year to make sure it's not causing any issues with the single family as well.
So you're suggesting we don't add a provision that says?
We can definitely add that. I mean, they are subject to meeting the noise ordinance now. We can add another.
If you think that that won't be occurring because of a lack of tables, I'm fine with that, but just trying to get creative in a way to protect the neighborhoods.
Mayor, what would adding, if they already have to adhere to the noise restrictions, what would adding a provision do?
Because in my experience, there's neighbors that complain about a noise ordinance violation, and then it becomes a he said, she said, and it's difficult to enforce. And in this instance, if we observe it, I think we, my thought is we could just pull the permit, and so there's an extra layer of protection. I'm great, I'm great with not putting it in there, guys. It was just an idea. So let's just, I think that if they're not going to have tables there, people aren't going to be sitting outside, we haven't a noise ordinance already, we'll evaluate it for a year.
Is it worrisome to staff as opposed to that being a year permit and six months?
No, I say we just do, I think it's fine. I think a year, I think this is, I think, I don't want to overcomplicate it, and it was just, just an idea. I think, I think a one-year permit, and I appreciate that, Councilmember Bearfield, I think, I appreciate you getting creative here. But I think a one-year permit, we'll just evaluate it and use the noise ordinance in place.
I like your idea, Mayor. Number one is if I live next door to this food truck, even though they don't have tables, people sometimes still loiter in the area and eat in their car. Their music could be going on in their car, and it could be disturbing the neighborhoods. I really do like your idea, because I live next door to bed and breakfast, and sometimes the noise does get overbearing, but I think that's a, it's a good suggestion, Mayor, that we're mindful of the residents and neighbors that live around there, you know, and they need to know, yeah, we support small businesses and entrepreneurs, but at the same time, we need to respect the neighborhood and the residents that live there.
So, Mayor, I would just remind you all that you're going to be having a public hearing tonight, and any condition that you put on a special permit needs to be specific and provable for purposes of revoking a special permit as well. So I just wanted to remind you of those two things, that y'all will be considering this case in a public hearing tonight, and then, so I just wanted to remind you all of that.
Is that possible, I guess, something drafted between now and the special, the public hearing to determine whether or not, I mean, is there something that you could put in, could draft out that's determinable and specific that we could evaluate at that time?
Well, I guess what I was trying to get at was, first of all, that y'all shouldn't be making a decision on the permit today without having the public hearing first, is my number one point. And then the number two point was that if you have a concern about noise, we'll have to set some kind of noise limit that will still have to be provable in order to revoke a permit. So that was all I was saying.
And I wasn't, just to be clear, I wasn't making a decision. I'm just evaluating whether or not there's a condition that could be applied to this.
That was my discussion as well, just a discussion in here, you know, how the rest of the council feels about.
Yeah, and I'll pose the question to Clint. Have we had a similar situation like this, where we, it seems like we, I remember having something like this.
Yeah, we've had conditions specifically to, you know, making sure that it's clear that they have to abide by the noise ordinance. We can work on drafting something that we We can work on drafting something that would not have any outdoor music playing, basically, and bring that to the meeting tonight.
Yeah, we wouldn't reinvent the wheel, whatever we've used in the past on something similar to this.
We can look at it before tonight.
Suggest it again.
Mayor, I appreciate that as well. I think this is interesting because that's a commercial area, but all of the homes around it are all single-family homes that are within a, you know, you can toss a rock at them. So, I think having the both and of a little extra protection, and it sounds like the business owner would easily and would be pretty willing to sign on with this in light of everything else. So, it just gives us all a little protection and shows, like Councilmember Rodriguez said, that we're being really thoughtful of the folks that live right there. I live two blocks from there, so I feel pretty invested in this as well, but for the folks that live immediately next door, Jason.
That would be my question for our city attorney, and Director Peters would be, would it be a, you know, if, after three complaints from the neighborhood or noise citations? Like, is it something kind of a, are there metrics that would trigger the pulling of the permit, or, you know what I mean? Or if, is it, how is that, is it complaint-driven, is it enforcement-driven, is it conviction-driven? You know, what would, what would satisfy that condition in a way that it could be drafted so that the plan department is, you know, has a sense of coherence of how to, how to enforce that condition?
Is this for short-term rentals? Isn't there a restriction on?
It's tied to the noise ordinance.
Short-term rentals is?
Yeah.
But it's a condition in the special permit?
Condition that they have to meet all the.
So, we have a special permit that has a noise provision that's a condition to the special permit being issued that's tied to the noise ordinance?
Correct.
Maybe that seems like a pathway.
Yeah.
Let's consider that when we take up the public hearing.
Yeah, that's right. Something like that.
Sorry for the wrinkle there, just trying to be thoughtful.
No worries. And I, I mean, I think that's the intent of the, the operator, they, they want to fit in with the neighborhood, obviously, and they, they have been okay with all the conditions that we've placed on there so far, so we'll, we'll work on something, and I think they'll be okay with it. All right, our next public hearing, as mentioned earlier, is dealing with our honorary street naming, to consider a request for an honorary street naming of Lester Gibson Way for a portion of Washington Avenue from University Parks Drive to Sixth Street. If approved, this honorary street naming will be a permanent tribute to the legacy of civil rights and community leader, Commissioner Lester Gibson. Gibson was a graduate of A.J. Moore High School and Baylor University. He also served in the U.S. Navy during the Vietnam War. He then embarked on a public service career in Waco that included working for the Housing Authority for numerous years, publishing two community newspapers, working on political campaigns, serving two years for the Waco City Council, and finally, serving as county commissioner for 28 years, which he was the first black commissioner since Reconstruction and the longest-serving commissioner in McLean County history. We did have approximately 30 people attend the Plan Commission meeting in support of the honorary street name, including four speakers, Leanne Edwards that spoke on behalf of the Gibson family, Commissioner Pat Chisholm Miller, who worked for Commissioner Gibson for nearly 20 years and then replaced, replaced him on the commission court, Jeanette Bell with the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association, and Dr. Nika Davis, who is the pastor of Second Missionary Baptist Church. As mentioned by Councilmember Bearfield, this would be for the section of Washington Avenue from University Parks up to Sixth Street, which includes five blocks and four intersections leading from the Convention Center past City Hall and ultimately up to the courthouse. And then here are some photos of those blocks. You can see the Washington Bridge in the background, looking towards the river, and then back towards the courthouse, and then looking down the courthouse. There are four intersections in this, in these blocks, and this honorary street renaming will have sign toppers, so it'll be similar to these examples in other cities where you have Washington Avenue and then Lester Gibson Way sign topper on that. And this was recommended for approval by the Plan Commission by a vote of nine to zero. My next public hearing, 685, is dealing with a voluntary annexation on eight and a half acres along I-35 at 6378 South Interstate I-35. This is for an industrial development that is just outside of our city limits. This is Sndero Springs. You can see that blue line is our current city limits, and then this tract is eight acres here. They will be tied into city utilities, water, sewer, and streets, and proposing M2 zoning. It is the site of a proposed tractor dealership that is currently under construction. We did have 38 notices on this one and no return. Plan Commission recommended by a vote of nine to zero to approve the annexation and rezoning, or zoning of the property for M2.
I think anytime the city can voluntarily annex in Interstate Frontage Road, that's, that's a pretty big revenue win, so it makes a lot of sense.
Our next public hearing is a rezoning at 228 South H Street from M2 to C4. This is a 1.2 acre tractor land that is the, the former Morrison Supply Company building across the street from Texas Metering. You can see this area has, over the last 20 to 25 years, has been transitioning from industrial zoning to C4, which is mixed-use commercial downtown zoning, and this request is in line with that transition. Here's the, the building we're talking about here, looking down H Street at the corner of Eighth and Mary. Looking down Mary, you can see the new construction of the AC Marriott Hotel and other developments along there. And then looking back down H Street towards the new People Bar. Plan Commission did recommend approval of this change. It is in line with recent development in our comprehensive plan. And then our last zoning change request is on 3308 Puget Drive. This is in South Waco and Alta Vista neighborhood, almost to the city of Robinson, off Robinson Drive. Excuse me. This is, Puget Drive is a single-family residential street. It's got a mix of both single-family uses and duplexes. You can see it's urban residential land use. And then along the street, you have a mix of single-family zoning, which is this yellow, and then this orange is R2 zoning where there's duplexes built. This is a vacant lot, and you can see, looking down the street, that this is a church property here, but there's other duplexes and single-family homes along that street. Plan Commission did recommend approval by six to three to approve the rezoning to R2. We did mail out 39 notices and had zero return. The three that voted against the approval had concerns about R2 opening up the potential for short-term rentals. And that's all we have.
Any questions for Clint?
Nope.
Thank you, Clint. Are there any requests for future agenda items? We will now recess the work session and reconvene for regular session as read in, we will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session or executive session, was read into the record by the city secretary at 4:23.
Attorney briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Permit application for proposed landfill, Texas Commission of Environmental Quality Permit Number MSW-2400. Real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.0172. And economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session.